Good evening, Edmond, and I welcome you to the Edmond City Council Candidate Forum. My name is Eric Tappy and I'll be the host for tonight's forum. I'm a member of this place we call our community, serving on various boards, and am the Secretary for the Edmond Summit Rotary. This debate is sponsored by the Edmond Summit Rotary and Edmond Active. We are pleased to host this online forum broadcasting live from Vault 405 in downtown Edmond, where we will hear from candidates in both Wards 3 and Wards 4 tonight. This evening is a time for learning the views of each candidate and participating in democracy, which is the bedrock of our society. The questions come from a diverse group of leaders from across our city. There will be no debating tonight. Instead, each candidate will have two minutes to respond to the questions, and we will hear from those in Ward 3 first, and then those in Ward 4. Each category will be done alphabetically, and we will be able to cover five topics in our hour and a half together. But that should not be the only time you hear from these candidates. These are your neighbors, and they all care about our city. Let us begin our candidates this evening with Cody Boyd. But first, I would be remiss if I did not wish Cody Boyd a happy birthday. Welcome aboard, and I'll let you have your intro for two minutes.
Thank you, Eric. And thank you for the birthday wishes as well. I'm Cody Boyd. I'm running for Edmond City Council, Ward 3, which is roughly south of 15th Street and west of I-35. Alex, my wife and I, we moved to the Ripple Creek neighborhood in 2013. And we lived just south of Crest and Santa Fe High School in our middle-class neighborhood. It's the same neighborhood she grew up in. We've been involved in our neighborhood association for many years. I've been on the board the last five years as treasurer and as president. I've been on two city boards, the Capital Improvement Advisory Task Force and the Public Transportation Committee. I've been involved in Edmond Young Professionals and the Edmond Chamber Diversity and Inclusion Committee. We are very involved in our church, the Springs Church of Christ, and we worship here in Edmond. And we volunteered with the National Alliance on Mental Illness. Mental health and improving access to healthcare is very personal to me, and it's actually why I chose a career in public service. I have worked for the state government and the Oklahoma Department. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the people of Oklahoma in this capacity, and I would certainly ask for the honor of receiving their vote to continue that work in local government. So today is my birthday. I'm 34 years old. The average age in Edmond is definitely getting younger, folks in their mid-30s. And that generation really isn't represented on the city council right now. And we're talking about young families, young professionals, college students, people continuing their education. So I'm an and I'm a representative of us. Thank you for having me tonight.
And now we will hear from Cheryl Janis. Cheryl?
Hi, Eric. Good evening. You look great tonight. I wanted to just introduce myself. I am Cheryl Janis. I am a longtime Edmond resident. I was born here in 1967. I raised my children here. I have four children that all went to Edmond Public Schools. And I met my husband here while I was still a senior in high school. We got married the year after I graduated. So we have been married since 1986. So it's been a while. And I like to tell people that I'm pretty good at negotiating, and I'm pretty good at solving problems. And if you've ever been married for as long as I have and worked with your spouse day in and day out like I do, there's a lot of negotiating and compromises that go on there. So we built a business in Edmond in 1997. It's an auto repair shop. And about two years ago, we were able to move into a brand-new facility that we had built from the ground up, which is kind of what got me started with my interest in city council, because I had to go through an urban board and city council to get my building approved. I had to go through rezoning and getting plans approved and getting variances done. So that really sparked my interest in city government. And then I was fortunate enough to go through Leadership Edmond as part of a Chamber of Commerce program, which is a fantastic program here in Edmond. If you haven't gone through it, you really should. It teaches you all about the ins and outs of Edmond. And that, I got to go and be a city council member during that time and loved that. And I just love Edmond. I just want to keep Edmond, Edmond is why I'm running.
Well, thank you so much, Cheryl. And now we will hear from Kristen Mugg.
Hi. Thank you for hosting this event tonight and giving us an opportunity to visit with voters. My name's Kristen Mugg, and I have thought about running for city council for several years, but wanted to get my business and my kids in a space where I had the time and energy to devote. I did grow up in Oklahoma City, graduated from Pittman City North High School, went to OU for my undergraduate degree, worked at Southwestern Bell Telephone, and got my MBA at night while I was working, and then decided to go to law school at OCU. Graduated from law school in 1998 and decided we're going to move to Edmond. My mom and dad had moved there when I was in college. My sister and her husband, Mark and Stacy Nash, also live in Edmond, and it started their family. And it's where I knew I wanted to live and raise my kids. So worked at a law firm, Hertz on Conger and Kason, doing estate planning and tax from the beginning of my legal career, and then worked at McAfee and Taft from 2000 to 2005, and then decided I want to start my own law firm, and I'm going to do it in my hometown. I'm going to do it in Edmond. And so the firm is now Mugg Winston. We've grown from me and my house. We now have five lawyers, 12 total employees. I did own a commercial building from 2008 to 2018. So I've had that experience both on the Owners Association Board and owning the building. I've been on my Homeowners Association Board. And so again, my daughter graduated in the spring from Edmond Memorial. My son is 21. It's time to step up and run. I want to be a link between government and Edmond and the residents and be available and responsive. I'm going to continue my knowledge base to hit the ground running and make unbiased, good decisions for all of Edmond and to be honest and transparent. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Kristen. And now we're going to transition to those in Ward 4. We will start with Michael Bowie.
Thank you, Eric. Thanks Rotary, Edmond Active, all the candidates for coming on with us tonight, and all those of you watching online. My name is Michael Bowie. I've been married to my amazing wife, Amy, for 21 years. We have three kids here in Edmond, Rachel, Noah, and Joel. I was born in Shattuck, raised around the Shawnee Meeker area, and been in Edmond for around 11 years now. Was raised on a farm, showed livestock, won many awards in 4-H and FFA, including State Farmer. I learned valuable life lessons on the farm, like hard work and making the best out of bad situations. I was a walk-on football player at Southwestern. We won a national championship in '96. Moved to Stillwater to attend OSU, and my life changed forever there when I accepted Jesus Christ as my Savior and answered the call to pastoral ministry. He's a big reason why I'm running for this office tonight. I'm an OSU grad, business owner, and a pastor. My time on staff at Life Church and Victory Church in Edmond actually fueled my passion for this community. I've been heavily involved in ministries, the chamber, and organizations that help people in the businesses here. I was honored to be named Ambassador of the Year in 2017 with Edmond Chamber, and I've been involved in the schools as a speaker, reading programs, helping with the reward systems to promote good behavior. I love Edmond. I'll fight against any form of government overreach, including mass gun or vaccine mandates. People are smart enough to decide the best course of action for the family, I believe. I support our police, our fire, emergency, and military, and I'll fight for them, not defunding these much-needed heroes. I'm pro-life. I believe the Constitution was God-inspired and one of the greatest documents ever created to govern the people. I support all the amendments, including the freedom of speech, freedom of religion, Second Amendment, rights to keep and bear arms, and I believe they are under attack. Ask for your vote on February 9th and, God willing, on April 6th.
Perfect. Well, thank you so much, Michael. And now we will hear from Ryan Dally. Ryan, go ahead.
Thanks, Eric. I appreciate this opportunity. I am, my name is Ryan Dally. I'm married with five kids. My wife and I have been married for 15 years now. And I've lived in Oklahoma for about five years and have worked here in Edmond specifically for all five of those years. But we actually lived in Yukon for four of those years. And we made the decision to, our kids are getting, our kids are getting older and they're ready to start high school. We have two middle-aged kids in school, and then elementary and a baby and another in just pre-K. So we have a lot going on. And my wife and I made the decision that we said, hey, we want to, we want to do the best for our family, and we want to find a good community to raise them in. And so we made, we looked around and we made the decision to move to Edmond a year ago. And we love the community. And so that was my reason to want to serve, is that I wanted to help others to realize what a great community this is. In working over here, I decided to go back to school. I got my finance degree at UCO just a couple of years ago and have really, really enjoyed the community here. We, I grew up in eastern Montana and have been in a position where we couldn't, couldn't raise a family out there because there's just not enough economic activity. And so my goals are to help the community here to grow and to be able to have their children grow, be raised here and be able to come back here. So I'm grateful for this opportunity and look forward to serving in this good community.
Thank you, Ryan. And now we will hear from David Miller. Good evening, David.
Hi, Eric. And thank you for putting on this forum, and thank you for the Edmond Summit Rotary putting this on. And I'll say happy birthday to Cody as well. My mother's birthday is tomorrow, so that'll remind me to call her. I moved to Edmond 25 years ago. Brought my wife, Marcia, of 37 years. We've been married 37 years. We have three daughters that grew up in Edmond. They're all married. They all have four-year degrees, and I have three young grandsons. First time I ran for office was because I wanted to make sure that my daughters stayed in Edmond. So I wanted to make sure there was an environment here that kept them here. And I'm going to claim a victory on that. And now I'm going to work on the same environment for my grandsons. I served on the council from June of 2001 to February of 2012. I was mayor pro temp for two of those years, 2010 to 2012. City of Edmond liaison to the federal legislative delegation for 10 years. Served on the American Public Power Association, representing Edmond Electric, on their advisory board for eight years. My philosophy is the government should be run like a business. We should be good stewards of the people's money, safety, and trust. Operate with integrity, be consistent, and always be transparent. I have extensive council experience. We have some hills to climb in the future, and I think that that experience is going to be needed. I also have a track record that anybody can look at. You can check my record on voting for almost 12 years. I have no regrets on any of the voting votes I made. I stand behind them. I know the issues confronting us in the long run, and I'll focus on the city of Edmond as a whole. And I will always concentrate on the big picture. Thanks.
Perfect. Thank you so much, David. And now our last intro will be from Stacy Peterson.
Hi, Eric. Thanks so much for having me. My name is Stacy Peterson. We moved to Edmond in 1973, and I've been married to my husband, Doug Peterson, for almost 33 years. We have two beautiful daughters, an amazing son-in-law, who's a marine veteran, and two fantastic grandchildren. And I grew up here, went to Edmond Memorial High School, graduated from University of Central Oklahoma, with a bachelor's in the science of nursing. And I've been a nurse all my adult life until my mother became ill with dementia, and us girls needed to help her go to heaven. And once she did, my husband suggested that I take a hiatus and play with our grandchildren. So I absolutely took him up on that. And I got as involved as I could in the city of Edmond at that time. I joined, we joined the chamber. I became an ambassador immediately, which I love, meeting small businesses and their business owners. I belong to Small Business Owner Alliance. Edmond locally owned, the Government Council Committee. And I was so honored to sit on the committee for the legislative agenda for 2021 for Edmond. I was approached about two years ago about me running for city council, and I knew immediately I wanted to do it, but needed to pray about it. And when I finally decided this is where God wanted me, I said, yeah, let's go, let's do this. And I've been so excited about it ever since. I love Edmond, and I want to continue to make it a great place for families to live, raise their families, and to run their businesses.
Thank you so much, Stacy. And I'll also let everybody know that Leadership Edmond is sponsored by the Edmond Chamber of Commerce, so you can check out their website more for that information. So let us begin with the topic which has changed every one of our lives within the last year. With the COVID pandemic continuing to take a toll on our city and the number of cases being at an all-time high, what will your approach be to moving the city forward as the vaccine distribution continues? Cody, we will begin with you.
Thank you. The COVID-19 pandemic has been terrible. There's no doubt about it. Just because it didn't affect my health personally doesn't mean that it didn't affect thousands of others. And I believe in loving our neighbors as ourselves. It's very personal to me. Had a close relative who had it, and he now has major kidney issues because of it. So even though he survived, his life will never be the same because of COVID. I can't thank the first responders, the medical professionals enough for risking their health to help us through this. I know the impact that it's had on businesses. We have a friend who's closing down her store because of this horrible situation. It's hard for local businesses to compete with giant corporations like Amazon, who can deliver things to people's doorsteps. Our local businesses count on the walk-in traffic. They count on the loyal return customers. You know, city governments have really led the way on COVID, and I think Edmond has really done the best it can with this situation. The federal government has definitely failed us in assisting workers and small business owners adequately. And that's something that's beyond Edmond's control, unfortunately. I think the city acted appropriately with the mask requirement. I know some folks don't like it. I don't like it. I don't like wearing one or having the government tell me what to do. But you know, this is one of those things that had to be carefully considered and vigorously debated, and it was. I think the city has done well with having the expiration date and having to revisit it every so often and vote to renew it. So you know, wearing the mask is not so much about protecting me. It's about protecting you in case I have COVID and don't know it, and I don't want to spread it to someone else. It's helped us keep our businesses open and keep our hospitals from being overwhelmed.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Cody. And now we will hear from Cheryl.
Hello. I just wanted to say that I believe that with the numbers changing on a daily basis, we just have to look at it a lot. We can't just make a decision and have it say it's going to go for months at a time because the data shows that the numbers change all the time. And if you look back to when we implemented our mask mandate, our numbers actually had been going down. So I do believe that we need to be responsible. I do believe we need to educate our community. We need to educate ourselves so that we can make the best choices for ourselves and our families. I do believe it's a personal responsibility to make sure that you know what you're doing, and you make, you get to make that choice. I don't believe that the government should tell me what I should do or how I should run my business. I do believe that if someone wants to wear a mask, they can wear a mask. If, you know, someone chooses not to, because there's lots of different reasons that people cannot wear a mask. And I think those liberties are being taken away. So I just really believe that we've got to look at it. I mean, even maybe on a daily basis. Check it out, and if the numbers are going down, maybe we need to revisit what we've done. We need to keep businesses open. We should never, ever, ever shut businesses down again. Not only is it hurting just that business, but if you have a business that has five, 10, even one or two employees, you have now taken all of those families and put them in jeopardy. So the virus is more than just a virus. It is impacting lots and lots of people in lots and lots of ways. And it's affecting our kids. You know, I had a friend whose 14-year-old committed suicide a couple of weeks ago. And because he's not in school and he got depressed, and you know, who knows? But we've got to get our businesses and our cities back open.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Cheryl. And now we will hear from Kristen Mugg.
Thanks, Eric. It's hard to believe that one year ago today, the first COVID-19 case was diagnosed in the United States. It's been one long, difficult, hard year. Very trying on students, parents. We have 12 employees, and it has been difficult as a business owner. It's been difficult making decisions on a daily basis. I am very hopeful today with the vaccine. I have an estate planning practice, so I deal with a lot of folks in the over-65 category. Many of them have gotten their first vaccines. My parents have gotten their first vaccines. I do, I do support the mask mandate that is in place. I know it was a tough decision. I think it was the right public safety decision, the right decision to keep my business open and profitable, everyone else's business open and profitable, not overwhelm our healthcare system, keep kids in school, keep teachers healthy, and protect the safety and well-being and health of our citizens. And it was the right thing to do because we care about each other and we care about our city, and the evidence shows that it would reduce spread. I am very hopeful in May, when we take office in Ward 3, Ward 4, and mayor, that we're not talking about masks. We're talking about the things that are important for the future of this city and the growth and the support of our community. Edmond fortunately has not been hit as hard economically as a lot of other communities, but people are suffering and hurting. Today, I'm hopeful. I'm hopeful that the vaccine coming, we will have numbers go down. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. And now we will begin with those in Ward 4, starting with Michael Bowie. Michael?
Yeah. First, I want us to give a shout out to all of our first responders, nurses, doctors, all the community heroes during this difficult time. Say thank you for your service. COVID's been tough. We've witnessed many businesses closed due to the shutdowns. Our hearts go out to all those who are hurting from the virus, the losses that they've, they've been up against, all the after-effects. But I believe we're resilient people, and anytime something negative happens, we had the opportunity to respond in a positive way. Some of the greatest moments in American history have come off of the lowest seasons that have faced our nation. You know, we're learning how to adjust our businesses, our schools, the communities by working together. And Edmond's not only adjusted, but it's continued to increase its production and sales. We need to remain vigilant and flexible. I believe our city council needs to adjust regulations and its support as it's needed to make sure that we can continue to be successful while keeping our businesses open. We need to work with the community to make sure everyone has the resources they need to be the most productive. I believe we need to remove the mandates and trusted our families and businesses had the wisdom and ability to make safe decisions without government overreach. If we allow the people to use our innovation and creativity during this time, I think that we can overcome this. Believe that we'll learn a lot of new things, and also believe that we'll have a greater bond as neighbors and as a community.
Perfect. Thank you, Michael. And now we will hear from Ryan.
Thank you, Eric. COVID has been terrible. It has been something that has changed our lives for sure. I, with all of our children being at home, had, it's been very, very difficult for us. I'm grateful my wife is able to stay home and take care of our children with the split AB schedule. It's been, it's been a challenge, and I feel bad for those that have been affected by that. And again, I go back to, I'm a strong proponent of freedom of choice. I strongly believe that businesses and individuals need to make their own decisions of what works best for them. I think that arbitrarily just shutting businesses down is the absolute wrong thing to do. And I think that the city council owes it to the citizens of the community to allow them to use their own judgment, to be free to make their own choices. And I think that we have to use common sense. I don't think we should be, should be doing things that are unnecessarily risky. But at the other side of the coin, I think that the side effects of this pandemic have been unbelievably terrible for many, many people. I'm an oil and gas person, and it has been unbelievable what's happened to the demand destruction of, in our industry, and it has caused real-worlds implications. I've had to lay off people that work directly for me, and it's been, it's been terrible. So I think as a community, I think we need to focus on being responsible and being free in our ability to make choices that are best for our families and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. And now we will hear from David.
Oh, there we go. Okay. Again, I'd like to give a shout out mainly to doctors and nurses that have been through this. I have two nieces that are nurses, and I know it's been rough. As a matter of fact, she, that, my sister, my two nieces and my brother-in-law all had COVID. I know that there, but most people have been affected by this in some way, either by having it themselves or knowing someone that's had it, had their business shut down arbitrarily. Again, I'm going to side with most of them, most of the people here, and tell you that I would not shut down businesses. I would make sure that you have your choice of whether or not you want to go there. If a business, if y'all remember back, Walmart required masks before anybody else did, before it was a city mandate. And I complied with that because that was what they wanted. They also put in the six-foot markers. And I think, once we started the mask mandate, we kind of got away from social distancing. And that's, so I think we kind of defeated the purpose with that. I'm not sure. I don't, I don't have the information that the sitting council members have. None of us do. Some information they have is not privy to everybody else, so they may know something we don't know. As far as what we're looking at in a post-COVID world, I can tell you that for sure that business as usual will not be business as usual. If you look at the tax collections for the city of Edmond, the actual sales tax has gone almost stagnant, while the use tax has skyrocketed. And that comes from basically e-commerce. So what I would advise is most of our merchants, most of our local businesses, to get on that, get on that wagon, see how you can get in on that. Most of our restaurants are doing that now. A lot of other businesses that I talk to, I've advised them to try to get some type of e-commerce presence because that's what's going to be happening going forward, COVID or not. And that's basically my feeling. Go ahead, Eric. Take it away.
Thank you, David. And I'd also like to point out this last month, we did have a negative sales tax growth, but our use tax was up, so that would suggest more electronics shopping. And so now let's hear from Stacy.
Thanks, Eric. COVID, it's just been extremely horribly difficult for not even, not just the city of Edmond, but the entire world. I think it's extremely important for local officials to treat this as the number-one priority and carefully study all the facts that go along with it. Just from watching the Sweden numbers in their second round, it looks like they peaked around December 23rd, and they've had a rapid decline. So hopefully, the second round that comes around is going to have a rapid decline for us. So I think what's important for us to concentrate on is helping to the city officials to helping support these businesses and these small entrepreneurs getting back to work and getting their businesses back online so they can help support their families. I think that's where the city council can help with that. Of course, being a nurse, it's important to have good hygiene. Goodness, you should be doing that even before COVID. Wash your hands, wash them thoroughly and wash them often. And don't touch your face, your mouth, your nose, your eyes. And if you're sick, for heaven's sake, just stay home. But I don't think it's governments, I don't think government should go into your family. That's government overreach. And I think it's a violation of the Constitution and your individual rights.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. While many cities across the nation have been devastated by lower tax receipts, Edmond has had continual growth on average over the last several years. Edmond is financed strictly through sales tax, but recently created its ever-first tax increment finance district. What are some ways you hope to continue development across our city and a positive sales tax trajectory? Cody, the question goes to you.
Thank you for the question. And absolutely, cities in Oklahoma live and die by sales tax. A lot of people may not know, but that's due to very restrictive state laws that put Oklahoma apart from every other state in the nation that shackles what types of revenue sources the city has access to and what they can bring to. that, that shackles what types of revenue sources the city has access to and what they can bring to the voters. I agree with Governor Stitt. I want Oklahoma to be a top 10 state. And I would work with the Edmund delegation at the state legislature to help us out on that. Let cities, let the local voters determine their own destiny with what types of revenue they use to fund city services. I guarantee everyone in local government, left, right, center, is focused on development, jobs, and commerce. I'm very pro-development. I'm very pro-economic diversification and, and definitely pro-tourism. I think that's, those are things Edmund needs to focus more on. It's very personal to me. I'm a millennial. Millennials love great cities because we want to eat out, we want to shop, and we want to spend our money at local businesses. We get it. One of the reasons we chose our neighborhood is because it's right by Crest and I can walk and go get groceries rather than take the car if I'm just getting a small load of groceries. You know, we want, we want shops, we want local restaurants, we want mixed-use development, walkable neighborhoods and businesses that we can go and spend our money easily without relying on the car. I was definitely a proponent of the agreement with Lime Scooters on the Public Transportation Committee. Edmund needs business districts that capitalize on their unique strengths. If you've ever spent time in Oklahoma City, Midtown, Uptown, Plaza District, those are some things Edmund could look at. Having business improvement districts where the businesses can really band together and help new development pay for new development. We must, we definitely must capitalize on our assets. The I-35 corridor should be developed and that will bring in jobs, retail, restaurants, large and small companies. Transportation and infrastructure creates jobs and commerce. There's no doubt about it.
Thank you, Cody. And now we will hear from Cheryl.
Hi there. So just jumping in, the downtown area has been a really big topic lately. I love what is going on downtown. We were very fortunate to be, to have our first TIF district, which is a tax increment finance district. And what that does is the increase in property values in that area pays for the infrastructure. And we are looking at about $70 million in infrastructure that needs to be done down here. So over the next several years, that increase in property taxes will basically pay for that infrastructure. So bringing good businesses downtown will bring more tax dollars in, obviously. It's been a great area. We've been into the new brewery frenzies and seen young families in there, bringing their kids in to listen to the live music. One of our city councilmen, Nick Massey, plays down there and it's just been a joy to see the people walking downtown Edmund. It used to kind of be a ghost town down there and now our people are staying here, they're eating downtown. We've got some really great little park areas downtown. We've got the rail yard. So I do believe that the city's growing in the right direction with all of these new businesses coming into Edmund. We also have the I-35 corridor out there with Showbiz, which I think being a big tenant is bringing, or is going to bring more businesses out there because who doesn't want to go to the movies? So we've got that. We've got the Hilton right next door, bringing in people for conventions. I think that east side of Edmund has a huge, huge opportunity to be a place to build businesses responsibly. So we just need to be looking at all of the areas in Edmund that are a good place to keep business growing.
Thank you, Cheryl. And I'll also give a shout out to downtown Edmund and the Edmund Convention and Visitors Bureau. You can check them out on social medias and all that to keep up with things new here in the city and upcoming events. And now let's hear from Kristin. Kristin?
Great. Generally, we want to have residents who live here, dine here, shop here, recreate here, not leave the city to, to do those things. We want to draw in regional visitors and we want to draw in businesses that then employ people who may or may not live in the community, again, bringing people in to spend their dollars at our businesses in Edmund. Again, like Brett Cody said, Oklahoma is the only state that relies completely upon sales tax and use tax to fund our cities. We get no portion of the property taxes. It goes to the schools and VOTx, but not to the cities. So we do have to be creative and I like some of the creative things that are happening. I'd like to see us go ahead and explore the Lake Arcadia area, specifically improving some of the amenities that are there, the camping facilities, the restrooms, the biking trails, the hiking trails. Some of the trails are amazing, but I think it can be a regional destination for people who don't live in Edmund. They come, they're going to go out to lunch. I would like to see some small, thoughtful, cautious, commercial development in that area too. I think that can be done without diminishing from the beauty and the nature aspects of it. A lot of people, a lot of voters are excited about that idea. Again, the I-35 and Covell corridor area is a really good opportunity for growth and development, continuing the downtown development, including being creative with the TIF financing. The Streeteries or something that came from the city is a great idea to help those businesses for folks who weren't comfortable coming inside the businesses to dine. You can still hear the music. My husband and I have been down there a number of times where, say, three years ago, we would have gone to Oklahoma City. So again, keep businesses here to employ people, keep residents here to play, and attract regional visitors and tourism to come spend their money here.
Thank you, Kristin. And now we'll begin with those in Ward 4, starting with Michael.
Hello, everybody. Again, I think Lieutenant Governor Matt Pennell has a heart for attracting businesses to the state of Oklahoma. Part of his job is to improve our state economy by bringing in like new companies and industry. So I think we need to coordinate with our state leaders. We need to define and deliver the desired residential and business needs that our community has and we need to be proactive in attracting these new businesses and homeowners to Edmund. I think the BNSF Railroad Quiet Zones, if everybody, if anyone knows about those, were a great addition to Edmund, allowing us to increase the areas for residential and commercial growth. We need more ideas like this. We need to take more actions like this in the, whoever's elected into the council. As a minister and a leader, I'm a firm believer in finding people or entities that lead the way in their respective areas. I think we can take time to learn from them. We need to meet with successful communities that are similar to Edmund and see what they're doing. And then we can apply the best ideas that would work for our hometown. We need to continue to promote the I-35 Covell Growth Area, find ways to make our downtown area attractive to people in and outside of Edmund. If we like, create areas for children, I believe that families will come and spend time walking around and join the area and shopping. And I believe that it'll increase our sales tax dollars. We have a strong art and performing arts community here. I think it'd be good to promote those and to provide resources to them. Our Heard on Heard is a really great way for my family to enjoy the downtown Edmund area. And I think we need to find other similar events to hold here that are like that. I believe Edmund is positioned as one of the top cities and I believe that we can be a part of leading the way for the state of Oklahoma and the United States. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And I'll also let people online know that this April, the city of Edmund through the Edmund Fine Arts Institute will be having the Edmund Vibes. It's an art walk you can participate in, so check out social media for that. And now we will hear from Ryan.
Thanks, Eric. I, I think I'm a prime example of what happens when you have good infrastructure. We, we made that decision to move here and bring our family here because as we, we looked around, we found the Mitch Park area and my, there was a gym there and a grocery store and there was Lowe's for me. And I told my wife, we're fine. This is going to be great. And so she told me, she said, if there is a, a Target that comes there and a Chick-fil-A, we'll never, ever have to leave a mile radius from our house ever again. So I think that, and the key there is that growth is coming for sure. If you look at, I travel to Dallas and Fort Worth all very frequently and over about the last 10 years, if any of you have been up the I-35 W corridor between Fort Worth and Gainesville, the growth is unbelievable and it's just coming this way. And I think that it is, it's the city's duty to, to be proactive in what they do to, to facilitate that, that growth that's coming and being responsible and being smart about how those, how that infrastructure is built. And that I think is going to be the biggest driver of, of revenue for, for the city is going to be, I think there's a lot of leakage right now. And in that, I mean that there are people that live here, but they go spend their dollars downtown or, or somewhere else because there is not enough shopping and retail to, to keep them, keep them around. And so I think as, as we focus on trying to, to build good infrastructure, I think that will help to, to generate, like I said, to generate more, more revenue for, for the city. Thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. And now we will hear from David.
You sure? Okay. Thanks. Well, the sales tax and use tax, they're the fuel that drives the engine that's Edmund. Without that, we might as well all go home and there won't be much at home to, you know, your toilets won't flush and your lights won't turn on if we don't have sales tax, to be honest with you. So basically, we need to grow. We need to grow sensibly. We need to keep that going. We need sensible growth that we can support and that can support us. We don't want growth for the sake of growth. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is we want positive growth that enhances our, enhances our city while still keeping our hometown feel. We still want to keep that. I think everybody in Edmund will agree, we want to keep a hometown feel. The use of the TIFs, I think the way they're doing it now is positive. It has no impact on the school districts. And I think it's a, I think it's a proper use of TIF. I would like to see more of that. And I think, you know, I would not support the city adding millages to, to, to your property tax for, for, for general fund use. General fund is supported by sales tax and use taxes and gasoline taxes, et cetera, things like that. And Edmund Electric makes a contribution to the general fund as well. So there's ways to keep that going without taxing people's property. That's for the schools. The county gets in on it, but the majority of it is for the schools. You know that, and I don't know how many of you know this, but I attended an event at the Lazy Arena this last weekend and I found out that the Hilton Garden Inn in Edmund is the preferred hotel for the Lazy Arena. So that brings in tourist dollars. So if we can put maybe a couple more hotels up there off Covell and I-35, which they have in the original plans, then we can bring in some of that too. But we've got to keep the tax engine, the tax dollar engine running in order to keep Edmund moving forward. Thanks, Eric.
And now we will hear from Stacy.
Thanks, Eric. Just like everybody else has said before, it's super important to support that urban development downtown Edmund. I think we need to encourage businesses to locate here, but I think it's also important to choose wisely the businesses that do locate there. I think it's important to ask the residents what they want there, what kind of restaurants, what kind of entertainment they want there. And we absolutely need to bring more events into this area. And we have plenty of hotels for them to accommodate them and that would bring in sales tax as well. Obviously, to work back on the, the corridor at Covell and I-35, COVID hit that pretty hard and put it on halt. And I think we need to encourage that to continue on the direction it was going originally. But most importantly, I think it's important to focus on the traffic in Edmund. Traffic is, is a big, big barrier to the quality of life here and we need to work on the traffic signal technology here in Edmund so that we can hopefully eliminate some of that traffic and encourage folks to come to this area. I think that all future sales tax-funded special projects should be considered to go towards that traffic signal system and to help with that traffic in Edmund.
Thank you, Stacy. The two largest employers in town deal with education. For you all, what is your understanding of the partnership between the city, the University of Central Oklahoma, and Edmund Public Schools? And how do you think you could grow these relationships in the future? Cody, we'll begin with you.
Yeah, Edmund Public Schools and UCO are Edmund's top employers. And so we rise and fall together. That's the reality. My wife worked at EPS. She went to school at Oklahoma Christian, which is in Oklahoma City Limits, but many people that, that work there live in Smiling Hill, just, just north of Edmund City Limits. We have lots of friends and families who work at those schools. You know, my mom taught second grade in my hometown for 35 years. So public education literally fed our family. So it's incredibly personal to us. I did my masters at OU while working full-time. I wish I could have done it at UCO instead and been closer to home. So we must have a city that is welcoming to young people and international students that makes it easy for them to shop and eat and work here, but also to see a future for themselves here. So we need business incubator, incubator programs to keep entrepreneurs here. We need to work with our, our sister cities in the metro area for regional transit so we can get students here and get them around. The mayor, the city, the city manager, the presidents of UCO and OC and the superintendent of EPS need to have, be on a first-name relationship, you know, have a text message, everyday relationship with each other. They, those schools need to be at the, at the table and have a seat at the table when we're making decisions. You know, in my career in state government, I've seen that really nothing happens without partnerships between different layers, layers of government and also with nonprofits, with chambers of commerce and with business and industry. So we have great partnerships here with our schools and we want to continue that. So I don't think that elected office is on-the-job training. I've done it. I've worked with folks at ODOT, with other state and federal agencies, with cities and counties and chambers of commerce. So I would be ready to hit the ground running on day one with that experience and to bring new ideas and, and reach across the table to make those partnerships.
Thank you, Cody. And now we will hear from Cheryl.
Thank you. So Edmund has a really great working relationship with UCO and Edmund Public Schools. Some of the things that they've done in recent years was the Mitch Park, the YMCA project out there. So it was a combination of the YMCA, Edmund Public Schools, and the city that all put money in towards that project being able to come to fruition. And I think that Edmund put in around $7 million in that project, but it allowed Edmund to have their own swimming pool for the kids that wanted to swim competitively through the schools, which is a great way to work with the schools and the city. The other thing they did, and we were so fortunate to be a part of last year, was the Edmund Tennis Center just opened. So all three high schools use the Edmund Tennis Center and that was also another great thing that the city and the schools all pitched in to work together because without that, none of that would have happened. No, no one school could have afforded to have their own great facility of tennis like they did. And at the ribbon cutting and the grand opening, they even had, one of the employees there say that they've actually had people come from around the world to look at that tennis center because it's such a fantastic facility that they believe it is probably one of the best, not just statewide, USA-wide, but worldwide facility that the city and the schools kind of came together for. And we have, you know, we just have great schools in Edmund. That's what brings people here, great schools, great police, great fire department. So it's a safe place to live and it's a great place to raise your children and work and play.
Thank you so much, Cheryl. And now we will hear from Kristin.
Thank you. We do have some really strong and impressive projects and relationships and collaborations. And Cheryl highlighted several of them I had listed too. The tennis center was a collaboration between the city and the Edmund Public Schools, the swim center, the YMCA, the public schools, and the city. There's also a project in development for a civic center auditorium at UCO that could also be used for the city. Again, it's a way for Edmund Public Schools, UCO, the city, I think it could be a venue used for all purposes, draw people in and also be a win there. I, I'd like to see really direct, regular meetings at the table, virtually, phone calls, communication with decision-makers at UCO, in Edmund Public Schools, with the city. And I would like to include Oklahoma Christian in that as well. Again, they're not in Oklahoma City proper. They are, again, people who live there or who work there often live in Edmund. It has an Edmund address. It is part of our Edmund community and I think we could partner with them. Also, the city council ward representatives for some of these border areas on the west border, Santa Fe. We have some Edmund Public Schools that are actually in Oklahoma City. We have some, a lot of Edmund residents in Edmund Public School folks who live there. So collaborating even larger than just with our Edmund Public Schools, but with our neighbors to the south and west in the Oklahoma City City Council, as well as, as the, the two universities that really are part of our community and our Edmund Public School system, regular, direct communication, collaborating, putting the monies that we all have together for projects and problem solving that we can all benefit from.
Thank you, Kristin. And now we will continue with those. And now we will continue with those in Ward four, starting with Michael. Michael?
I think we need to promote UCO and OCU. I believe that both of these campuses provide a lot of revenue to Edmund. Um, they provide housing, uh, for shopping and employees. Um, the concurrent programs have been effective in my own personal experience. I have a senior now who's taking concurrent classes and, um, be able to attain college credits while in high school, I think is important. So I support these types of programs and believe we need to coordinate with our universities and schools to make them the best that they can be in the state. I've been deeply involved in the public school system. I believe that we have some of the best teachers and educational leaders in the world. Um, I believe that they've overcome a lot recently and they continue to work to be better. We need to make sure that we are working closely with them to better understand their needs along with the needs of our families. We need to like coordinate our programs to have more like the YMCA pool and the tennis center so that our students have what they need to be successful as well. I also think that we need to, uh, we need to make sure, we need to make sure our vocational schools have the resources they need to be most effective. We're in a season where there are tons of jobs available for those that have electrical, construction, plumbing, heat and air and others, other skills like that. So we should encourage students and our parents to consider this much needed area of education. Um, those students who choose not to pursue college can still graduate with skills that will make them successful in life. And so I think all of those will work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And now we will hear from Ryan. Ryan?
So I think that, uh, that the education system is the foundation of your community. And I, again, I go back to my own personal experience here. We, uh, as we looked for a, a community to, to put roots into, the, one of the highest things, the highest priorities we had was finding a good education system for our, for our children. And so I, I think that we're not the only one that does that. And I think that it will be the driver to drive, uh, folks to, uh, to Edmund. And I think that, that means that the city has to have a good relationship with those folks. Um, I think that, again, you have to continue to provide the, the support that they need to, to make sure that they can give that and deliver that kind of service. Like, again, I look at my own experience and I, uh, we, we moved up here five years ago and I would have taken a long absence from, uh, from school to raise our, our kids. And I finished my, my, uh, my college degree at UCO just, just two years ago. And again, that's because there was that, uh, the opportunity. And I'm, I'm grateful for the, the level of education that is in Edmund. And I go back to, I think Edmund has the opportunity and in, in my own view is the best, um, community in, in Oklahoma. And I think we need to continue to push those things. And I think the key to that will be continuing to have a good relationship with the, all the educators in the, in the city.
Thank you, Brian. And now we'll hear from David. David?
Well, Ryan, when I first saw this question, the first thing I thought was what about OCU? So everybody else has touched on that, so I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on it. I have two daughters that have taught in the Edmund Public School System, one that still does. My daughter Hannah Casey teaches English at North. My daughter Amanda Fairbairn taught pre-AP chemistry way over my head at Memorial. Um, two of my daughters, Morgan and Hannah graduated from UCO. So I'm all for UCO, I'm all, we moved here because of the Edmund Public Schools. That was why we chose Edmund in the first place. That's why a lot of people choose Edmund. Having said all that, I've always thought that Edmund Public Schools, the city of Edmund, UCO, city of Edmund, and not so much OCU, but kind of at a arm's reach, always had somewhat of a symbiotic relationship. We've always worked well with them. Uh, OSBI is here because of a collaboration between the city of Edmund and, and, uh, UCO. That's a lot of jobs, that's also a lot of, uh, um, on the job type training, uh, experience for the forensic science students at, at UCO. Uh, we did the youth council with the Edmund Public High Schools. We need to revive that, bring it back. We need to support their initiatives, would it make sense for us? And 99 times out of 100, it does. We need to continue to work with them on their traffic and their growth issues. They're building, they're going to be building a new high school east of I-35 and we need to get to work on the infrastructure to support that. What I would like to do is establish a committee or board that meets regularly and interacts with all three on a regular basis. Edmund Public Schools, UCO and OCU. Uh, we've never had a bad relationship with them. Uh, there's no reason for anybody to think we have. We've always had a good relation with all, relationship with all three and we should continue that.
Thank you, David. And now our last answer will be from Stacy.
Thanks, Eric. Um, the main two, two main reasons that people come to Edmund obviously are for the good schools and because it's safe, we have a great police department. I think it's really important for, um, Edmund to kind of, to kind of stay out of the way of the property taxes. That is traditionally the school's lane. Um, the school's lane is property taxes and the city's lane is, uh, sales tax. And so I think that's important to stay away from that. And our property taxes are high enough anyway, they don't need to be going any higher. Um, I think we do have a, a great relationship with, with the schools, between the city and the schools. And it's not just the public schools and UCO, but Francis Tuttle is extremely important. And bringing those campuses into Edmund is, has been a great pro for Edmund. There's a lot of kids that, um, are not school bound, um, uh, college bound, but the trades are so important, they're so important for this country. Um, and it's really sad how, uh, people have been persuading folks to go away from those trades. So I'm super excited about Francis Tuttle being in Edmund. But I think it's great, the relationship between Edmund and all of the schools. And I think that's going to continue as long as we stay out of their lane and leave their property taxes to them.
Thank you, Stacy. And I'd also like to give a shout out to Francis Tuttle, they are building a new campus here in Edmund. So I hope you'll go check that out on Danforth. So now for our final question for our candidates, what is your vision for Edmund? And we will start with Cody.
Thank you. Uh, you know, I love my neighborhood and my neighbors and, uh, I didn't always feel that way about community. Um, I, as a younger man, I was very cynical and apathetic, um, towards public issues, but I had a, a life altering experience and, uh, really decided to, uh, commit my life to serving my fellow man as best as possible. Um, and I believe that's, that's part of my duty as a Christian is to love our neighbors. Um, and that's the best and highest use of, of our lives. So, um, you know, my vision for Edmund is, is a modern city that's, um, that's economically competitive, that's welcoming to all and has great neighborhoods. You know, young people, new families, new graduates want neighborhoods that are vibrant, uh, inclusive, safe, walkable, uh, and beautiful and that are built for people, not just cars. Um, we want a place that, uh, that loves its neighborhoods and where people love their neighbors and are involved in the neighborhood level. Um, I want everyone to be involved in their, in their neighborhood and to organize. You know, if you're not involved in your neighborhood, change that tomorrow. Um, go join your neighborhood group or HOA, if you don't have one, go start one. Um, it's powerful what people can do when we work together to, uh, achieve some of our, our mutual needs. Um, you know, our son is almost four years old and is going to start school soon. So, you know, the Edmund that he's going to grow up in with his friends will be very different from the Edmund we see today. Um, but you know, I have a lot of skin in the game. I want him to see a future for himself here where he can go to school, where he can see having a career, having life experiences and having his family here and not, not thinking he needs to leave, um, leave our community or leave the state. Um, so I want to work on things that we'll see come to fruition in the next few years and look long-term at things that are, we want to happen in the next 30 or 50 years. Um, so I plan on releasing a, uh, a slate of 50 new ideas for Edmund, uh, next week. Um, and I really do believe that our best days are ahead of us.
Thank you, Cody. And I also suggest to everybody in Edmund that they know both of their neighbors' names. It comes in handy and they are great friends of mine, even my neighbors. So now let's hear from Cheryl. Cheryl, go ahead.
All right, thanks, Eric. Um, my vision for Edmund was, would, is to keep Edmund Edmund. As someone who was born here and raised here, I grew up in a fantastic town where everybody kind of knew everybody. I know that's not possible with 95, 96,000 people, but we still have that small community feel. And I think all of the city councils, um, before us have done a really good job at keeping Edmund a very community oriented, very family oriented town. And when people come here, that's what they say. Um, my son's girlfriend is a hairstylist new to Edmund and she says she has at least five or more new clients every single week since just this December, since Christmas. And she said, they all say the same thing, Edmund is such a great place, it's so welcoming, the people here are awesome. I want to keep that feel in Edmund, I want to keep this, the community, the growth in Edmund. We're going to grow, we're not going to not grow. So I would love to see small, medium and large businesses come here and be welcomed in Edmund. Um, I would love to see the housing to continue to grow. Right now, we're almost out of houses for people to buy, especially in the lower, you know, price range. If you're buying a million dollar home, you can probably find one, but if you're looking for something under three or $400,000, they're few and far between. So we need to keep our housing growing, we need to keep our schools strong, we need to support our fire department, our police department. We need to keep our communities safe. And I just, I love Edmund and I just want to keep, keep the feel that we have here. And we're one of the top in the nation in schools, so that's a huge reason why people move here. So we do need to keep our, you know, our schools and our, um, police and fire strong here.
Thank you, Cheryl. And now we will hear from Kristen. Kristen?
Thank you. Um, my vision, like many others, is to continue with the foundation that's built by many of the folks who have worked so hard and lived here before us. Um, as I learn more and more about things that are happening, things that are being researched, um, there's some exciting things on the horizon. And like Cheryl said, we are going to grow. It's a great place to live and so people are going to want to come here. We've got to do it, um, mindfully, be physically responsible with our money, have, um, have reserves for an anticipated events like the ice storm, though hopefully we get reimbursed for most of that. Um, but grow and improve, um, and be overall a vibrant city, an exciting city, a welcoming city, an inclusive city. Um, the art, the public art program we have, I don't know of any other cities, um, certainly in this area that have that. And it makes our community very special. Um, but some other things that haven't been mentioned, or I haven't had an opportunity to mention that I'd like to see continue, the intelligent traffic system and the employees that run that, continue to expand that and improve upon that. Um, regional transit authorities, more public transportation that helps with traffic, smart meters for our water and electric. It's on, um, it, it's in one neighbor, as neighborhood, as I understand it, being tested. You know what you use on a day-to-day basis, you're going to conserve it more, most likely. That's what the evidence shows, um, especially with water, it's a precious resource. We use less, we pay less, uh, we all win. Um, and again, smart, strategic development based on long-term plans. And there's a lot of long-term plans that are out there that I'm learning about and that we're building upon. But I want it to be safe, I want it to be friendly, welcoming, inclusive, exciting, vibrant, more of what we're doing. And it'd be a privilege to serve on the city council.
Thank you, Kristen. And I also would like our viewers to know that in the coming weeks, we will have somebody from the Regional Transit Authority coming to our Edmund Summit Rotary Meetings on Tuesday morning. So I hope you will come and join us for a great breakfast and hear a good speaker. We will have many more as well. So now we will begin with those in Ward four, starting with Michael. Michael?
Hey guys, uh, I've enjoyed tonight, thank you so much. I really appreciated the opportunity to speak to you. Um, I see Edmund as a national leader. Um, I think it's, could be an example to the other communities in our state and then also just around the United States. I think you could set the example in a lot of different ways. I do believe it's the best place in the world to raise a family, um, to get a great education and to grow a business. You know, I'm an example of that. I came here, planned a business and have had the most successful years of my career here. Um, so I just, I really believe that. I can't wait to see us, um, complete our fourth high school and add more elementary and, and middle schools so we can keep our class sizes down and our growth potential up. I think we need to finish our waterworks project. Um, I think it'll be one of the lowest priced in large cities before long due to the proactive leadership that we've had to get ahead of the game and, uh, keep things updated before they were issues. And, uh, also they did it at a time when we had lower construction costs. If you, those of you who are in construction or in that world, you know that the costs have, have grown immensely. And so the fact that they, they were proactive enough to, to do this early, um, I think will save us a lot of money in the long run. And I think it'll, it'll provide support for our new housing projects that we're going to be ready for. Um, we need to address our traffic issues head-on. Need to be proactive with those as we grow so that people enjoy being here. And, uh, I think that we need to be good stewards with people's money. I always, as a minister, I always think of the single mom raising children like my mom was. Um, who's just giving her, her last penny to, to support us. I believe that, that in the same way that the council should be good stewards with those funds, that they need to use the money wisely, that we need to be conservative with it, that we need to have rainy day funds and things like that set back so that we can continue to be the best city to be a part of. Um, I really believe Edmund is the great, is a great place to grow. And I would.
Thank you, Michael. And now we will hear from Ryan.
Thanks, Eric. I, I appreciate this forum, it's been a great evening and I'm grateful for this opportunity to, to speak to, to voters. I, I'm excited to, uh, to hopefully serve, uh, this community. And I think that the goal is to build a community that you can raise, uh, raise your children and, and have a, um, a place that lives up to the, the foundation, the standards that have already been set by others before. And I travel a lot, I, I move, I go to, uh, to Houston and Midland and Dallas all the time. And there's some terrible, terrible things that happen down there when it comes to traffic and, and just the structure of how, uh, cities are put together. And I think that Edmund is in the, the, the tip of the spear of, of growing and, and going to get much larger in a, in, in the next five to 10 years. And I think if, um, if you don't, if you don't handle that growth, it'll, it's, it's like a monster and it'll tear things up. And I think that, um, traffic and all those things, if it's, it's done properly and it's done in a, a reasonable, um, fashion, I think that we can grow as a, as a community in the right way. And so that to me is what the, the goal is. The goal is to try to, uh, the wave is coming. Uh, you can feel it when you, when you go to Dallas that up I-35, that the corridor is coming. And I think we need to be ready for it and try to, um, to be smart about those things. And I, I think going back again to, to building a community, the key is, is not just rampant growth. It is, uh, growth done in a, in a responsible manner that is a, a place that you want to be able to, to raise your children and have your grandkids and have, um, have, have your, have your life. And I think that that is the, the key. And so again, I'm grateful for this opportunity. I hope that, uh, um, everyone will vote and we'll, we'll, we'll see what happens. So thanks.
Thank you, Ryan. And now we will hear from David.
Hey. Well, this has been a lot of fun, Eric. I, I didn't think this was going to be as much fun as it was listening to all this, but this is great. Um, first and foremost, for me, traffic and, 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 and street and road improvements, we need to dust off our transportation plan, we need to put it into action. Uh, that right now, I know part of the city staff is looking at and revamp, and starting to look at revamping part of it. I want to be part of that because I was part of originally writing the plan. Um, water treatment and water and our wastewater plant, we've got to get on that. We're pretty close to getting, to getting started on that. But if we don't do that, the growth that everybody wants to talk about on the east side of Edmund just will not happen. Uh, it's got to be put in place and we can do that and keep our small town feel. I want to see quality growth that contributes to our, our general fund and also contributes to the property taxes for the schools. Uh, anything that doesn't, I don't think we really need that. Uh, I, I don't think if they want to cooperate with our codes, uh, that they're not part of our future need. But we can always get good quality growth. People are always coming to Edmund wanting to build new businesses, wanting to build new, um, neighborhoods. And for some reason, we've, we've run some of them off because they didn't want to play, let's make a deal. Well, let's don't play, let's make a deal anymore. We've got a code, let's stick with the code. Uh, we need to have more destination type of development like we have out on I-35. We need more of that to bring people into Edmund, stop the leakage into Oklahoma City or sales tax dollars. That's part of my vision, we need to stop that completely. We need to, we need to keep our youth and our future in Edmund. They want to, we want to have an Edmund that they want to live, work and raise their families in. That's what I did, the, and previously, we need to keep that going, we need to start doing that again. I think we need more parks and more splash pads too. I got a note from my daughter that said we needed more parks and more splash pads and that sounds like a good idea. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, David. And our last answer will be from Stacy. Go ahead, Stacy.
This has been fun, I've really enjoyed it. Um, I want to see Edmund as a free market alternative to the. I want to see Edmund as a free-market alternative to the authoritarian cities and states. I think we're going to see a great wealth shift from those authoritarian states moving to the free-market cities, and I want to see Edmund be one of those places. I think we need to make it crystal clear that we are going to, we're committed to the constitutional constraints. We are going to protect individual liberties in this town. I think we need to keep low taxation in this city. I think it's important that we maintain affordable living in the city. I love Edmund. I have a passion for Edmund. I've lived here most of my life. I've raised my children here. My grandchildren are here. I want to see Edmund stay great for my babies, for my grandbabies, and I want to be a part of that, and I'm super excited about this.
Well, thank you, Stacy. And I want to thank all our candidates for joining us this evening. And I also want to thank you for joining the Edmund Summit Rotary and Edmund Actor for the City Council Forum and the Mayoral Forum last night. Both forums will be online for you to view and to share at any time. Make sure to check the Oklahoma Voter Portal for upcoming elections and sample ballots. Additionally, these forums could not have been possible with the help of Karos Sahari, Bill Hickman, and George Strecker, all members of the Edmund Summit Rotary who are helping behind the scenes. I personally thank them. I hope you will join us sometime at Rotary on Tuesday mornings here at Vault 405 in downtown Edmund for great speakers. Now, let's all go and make Edmund a great place to grow. Good night.